Are back, Mr. Clerk. Uh, do we need to? Call the roll for this, uh, hearing, zoning hearings?
Yes, sir.
All right, please do so.
This is the roll call for the virtual alcohol zoning public hearing, September thirteenth. The Honorable Catherine F. Rowell, District One.
Present.
Your Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable J. C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
I count on four.
And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum?
You go ahead and sound the first item.
First item, alcohol license rezoning variance modification cases. This is for a public hearing only. The first case is an alcohol license application. Public hearing for alcohol license for a general wholesale company doing business as general wholesale company for an alcohol license for the wholesale beer. Sale of beer at three hundred Villanova Drive, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three three six. This is located in District One. Police?
Yes, good evening, City Mayor and City Council in South Fulton family. Um, the applicant for the general wholesale at three hundred Villanova Drive is for a new license. This location would be utilized as a storage warehouse for the other existing general wholesale. Um, general wholesale has met all legal requirements to obtain an alcohol license for this location and a staff recommendation is approval.
All right, we are, we'll open the public hearing. Um, Mr. Clerk, any for or against?
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any comments in support or in opposition to this alcohol license application.
All right, uh, there any questions from council? Dr. Rowell will start with you, your district.
Uh, she actually, um, answered it because this is not open to the public. It's only for storage of products, so I don't have any questions.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Clerk, you want to sound the next item?
Yeah, the next item is a public hearing for an alcohol license for Crown Imports LLC. Doing business as Crown Imports for an alcohol license for the wholesale of beer and distilled beverages at one oh five Eagle Vista Parkway Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. This is located in District One.
All right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this application is for, um, Crown Imports at one oh five Eagle Vista Parkway and it's for a new license. Uh, Crown Imports have, have met all the legal requirements to obtain an alcohol license for this location and a staff recommendation is for approval.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this. Mr. Clerk, any for or against?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we did not receive any comments in support or opposition to this application.
All right, I will entertain any questions that any members of council have, starting with the district representative.
Uh, is this also a wholesaler in this, uh, location that's not open to the public?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Uh, see, hearing, seeing and hearing no other questions. I will go ahead and close this public hearing and Mr. Clerk, you can sound the next item.
Next item is item three, public hearing for an alcohol license for Gas Express Incorporated. Doing business as Circle K, number two hundred and thirty for an alcohol license for the retail sale of wine and malt beverages at fifty nine fifty five Fulton Industrial Boulevard, Suite Eight, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six, District One.
Um, this application for the Gas Express, which is doing business as Circle K, number two three zero is located at fifty nine fifty five Fulton Industrial Boulevard and this is for a new license as well. Um, Circle K has met all legal requirements to obtain an alcohol license, um, for this location and a staff recommendation would be for approval.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Any speakers for or against?
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any comments in support or in opposition to this application.
All right, again, I'll go to council, starting with, uh, the district representative.
Uh, this is, this is a new license, correct, but this is a former site of, um, the gas station, so this is the, the new facility right at Boat Rock and F I B?
That's correct, Councilwoman.
I don't have any additional question.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and Mr. Clerk, you can sound the next item.
Hey, the next item is item four. This is a special use permit, U twenty-two dash zero zero six. Public hearing for a special use permit for boarding school located at fifty five forty-five Stonewall Tale Road. And this is located in District Three.
All right, uh, CDRA or who's, who's speaking?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm here, Derek Hall, reporting on behalf of Community Development.
Thank you, go ahead. Did you have any information, anything you wanted to share about this?
Yes, I can, I can provide the presentation. Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk, do you want me to just share my screen? I have the presentation up or? How would you like to proceed?
Yeah, actu- actually, it should be up, it's.
Okay. I, I don't think we see it, but.
Okay, here we go. Is it visible now?
It is. We just probably need to reduce the size.
If this is about District Three, was what we see is, uh, seventy-five hundred Harrow Road, District Four. That's the presentation we see.
Just one moment, Councilmember. Corey, we're gonna probably need to go down a couple of slides to get to the, uh, Stonewall Tale project.
Stonewall Tale, you got it? Do you see it?
Yes. We just probably need to, um, if you could just reduce the size the, the way it appears on the screen, it's a little, uh, too big for the screen. While the city clerk gets that, uh, up and running, um, as I always typically start with my presentations, it's always great to present to the great residents of City of South Fulton and those business owners as well. Uh, and we have four presentations for, uh, the mayor and council and the citizens tonight. The first item is regarding a special use permit for a boarding school located in District Three. Um, I can continue with the presentation. I'll have it, I have it up on my screen, so, um, as the clerk gets it together. Uh, the request here is for a uh, permit to operate a boarding school at an existing location. Again, the address is fifty five forty-five Stonewall Tale Road. As it relates to the specific request, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for a school. School will be a hybrid model that is both day, that has both day students and boarding students. So meaning the traditional time that students attend between the hours of probably eight to three, uh, and then also having students to actually attend school but reside on campus. Uh, the zoning is currently A G one and the future land use is suburban neighborhood. This is of course the land use, um, of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in December twenty twenty-one. Um, and as a result of the future land use designation and the A G one zoning designation, this use is, um, consistent with the typical type of zoning district. Um, in accordance with the City of South Fulton zoning ordinance, schools are allowed in, um, A G one. Um, but the provision is to, uh, regulate schools with a special use permit. Therefore, uh, the applicant has submitted a request, uh, through the special use permit. Uh, the next illustration, um, is a map that shows the current land use designation, which is suburban neighborhood. Uh, the zoning map to the right shows A G one, which is, um, Agriculture One. And again, agriculture uses, um, allow for a school to be constructed uh, consistent with the overall vision of the land use map and the land use designation. Uh, the next, uh, slide illustrates an aerial view of the project site. As you can see, uh, there are residential units to the south of the project. Um, and then the school's main campus sits aback of Stonewall Tale Road. Um, and this use was previously used for a similar use. Uh, there is a nearby detention center, uh, but this is going to be a separate and altogether different type of use um, for this, uh, school that is currently vacant. The next illustration kind of shows a general, um, floor plan of the site uh, in relation to the existing area. As it relates to the specific, uh, request, um, the applicant and the city have conducted, um, some community meetings. We held our community zoning information meeting back in June, I believe, possibly July of this year to discuss the submittal of the application. There have been subsequent meetings that the applicant has held with the community to discuss the overall impact to the project. Um, as it relates to staff conditions, staff is recommending that the applicant submit a parking plan and that parking plan will be submitted to both uh, the police department and the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. That way, we understand and know that all issues related to potential parking and, um, backup onto Stonewall Tale have been addressed related to the particular, um, use that is being requested. Um, there were no additional concerns or comments. All of those things have been addressed, uh, in the design of the project. As I mentioned, this is an existing building. So everything has already been accounted for in terms of the prior construction. Therefore, staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions um, that are listed. Uh, in addition, this project went to planning commission on August twenty-sixth, I believe, the last Wednesday of August. I can't remember the date. Uh, and that particular recommendation was also approval from the planning commission. This concludes staff's presentation. Um, if there are any questions, staff is available to discuss those issues and I believe the applicant is also present.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. With that, I will open the public hearing. Uh, we have speakers for or against?
We don't have any speakers in opposition, but the applicant, Mr. Jason Allen, is on the call.
All right, well, thank you. We'll, we'll hear from Mr. Allen now.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone, all council members and, uh, you as well, Mayor Khalid, um, and especially as well, Mrs. Councilwoman Helen Willis, uh, for the opportunity to bring, um, this academy to the community.
All right, uh, we have no speakers against. Do we have any questions from council?
Yes, this is in my district, so I do have a comment. Um, thank you from, thank you, Mr. Allen, for attending, um, the council meeting. Mr. Allen and his wife and, um, Ms. Adeline, um, did meet with our community, did meet with the community in my district, um. Was it August, Mr. Hall? Or was it July? I think it was in July.
July and August, maybe. Was it, were the two meetings?
Well, we had the main meeting that had about maybe thirty to forty participants in it. And, um, the community, um, was, uh, uh, disturbed because there was some misinformation put out, but, um, once we put out, once we gave them the correct update and the correct information, um, the community was welcoming to this project. Uh, we did tell them we were gonna go back and have another meeting, um, once some of their, uh, questions and concerns. Um, uh, did I recall that, Mr. Hall? Did we tell them we were gonna have another meeting before it got to this process?
Before it got to City Council?
Uh-huh. Before it got to the process for us to prove it.
Uh, that's possible. We did have kind of an open discussion about the project at, um, our planning commission meeting. And, um, there were opportunities for the public that attended that meeting to discuss and the applicant and the representatives were there to discuss and dispel any issues and to also talk about the overall program that was proposed for the site.
Okay, no one showed up?
Oh, yes, there, there were, there were several people there that had questions and comments. Um, but, um, those issues were addressed by the applicant and the representatives. And as a result of that, uh, the planning commission made the recommendation to approve.
Okay, thank you so much. I just want to make sure we did what we told them we were gonna do. I appreciate it. That's it, I yield. I look forward to this opportunity coming to the City of South Fulton and in District Three. Um, right behind the school is a youth detention center where uh, individuals are housed until they are age eligible to go off to a state prison. And so, uh, I am glad that this is, uh, an opportunity for, uh, Mr. Allen and his team to, uh, nurture and, uh, put, put into young men, um, uh, mores and values that could prohibit, uh, young men from in and up in a facility that is located behind, um, this school. So I'm excited to see this project, um, progress forward and, and I told Mr. Allen and his team that they have my full support.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will close this public hearing. Mr. Clerk, you sound the next item?
Yes, sir. The next item is item five on the printed agenda. It's U twenty-two dash zero zero seven. It's a public hearing for a special use permit for a nail salon located at twenty-two twenty-five Jonesboro Road, located in District Seven. Staff?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. Uh, this item, um, as was indicated by the city clerk, is a request for a special use permit for a nail salon. Um, earlier today or yesterday, I can't remember the exact time, we received a request from the applicant to defer this until November twenty twenty-two. Um, if it's the pleasure of mayor and council, I can still go through the presentation, uh, but the applicant has requested deferral.
Uh, can we hear from our, our attorneys? Can we just accept this deferral and, and skip the presentation? I just want to confirm that.
You can do so. This is Reginald McClain, this is the city attorney. You can just, uh, defer the matter to a later date.
All right, well, then I will accept the motion to defer.
I move that we defer, uh, case U twenty-two dash zero zero seven to our, um, I guess, our October meeting. Some more.
All right, um.
Or second, I'm sorry.
It's been properly moved and seconded. May, may I just ask, um, we're in discussion.
Oh, it said November, I'm sorry.
Uh, may, may I just ask for items in, in District Seven? Could we, should we, um, hold them until January when they have a representative? I don't know how many there are in the pipeline. If people ask for deferrals, just, uh, is, is, first of all, is that possible and or recommended, Mr. McClain?
You can defer it out that far if the council chooses. Uh, I don't know if it would be recommended. I think that would, um, need to be a conversation had with the, between the applicant and the planning director.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
No, actually, Reginald just said that, you know, what I was going to say, because the request from, um, Kevin Battle was for deferral until November, so I think that is what we, we should honor, that request.
All right, Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, um, I, I, I don't agree with, uh, deferring this into, uh, until January, um. Mayor, you stated at the last regular council meeting, meeting that you are an at-large, uh, uh, member of council, so I would just ask, uh, between the members of council that are currently on O National who are doing a good job with doing their best that they can to, uh, help the constituents in District Seven and you, that we make sure that the residents are engaged with, uh, development that's coming before this council. But unless the applicant is requesting to defer items into January, I definitely do not agree with that.
All right, Dr. Rowell?
Yes, I want a man to reflect, um, me and my motion so that it's deferred until November twenty twenty-two.
Reflect the applicant's request.
Right, the request, exactly.
Thank you. All right, um, seeing no other hands, Mr. Clerk, go ahead, please call a vote.
I think we have to have a second to that amendment. Some second, second.
Properly moved and seconded, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call a vote.
Roll call for vote to defer into the November, uh, meeting, twenty twenty-two. Councilmember Rowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
I.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That item is deferred.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please sound the next item.
Next item is U twenty-two dash zero zero eight. It's a public hearing for a special use permit for a hair salon located at fifty-four ninety-five O National Highway in Suite C S. This is located in District Five.
All right, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. Um, as the clerk indicated, this is a request for a hair salon. Sorry, I need to change my view because I can't see the whole presentation. Um, and as the ordinance requires, hair salons, nail salons and similar types of uses require a special permit, special use permit, uh, as a part of the approval process. Uh, the zoning for the, um, the existing building is C two and the future land use map uh, indicates reg- uh, regional live work. Uh, so this proposed use is consistent with the future land use regulation. Um, as was indicated, the zoning ordinance requires for hair salons, uh, to be approved through a special use permit. Next slide. Uh, the maps, uh, attached to this, uh, slide just indicate the comprehensive land use, which is regional, regional live work and the zoning, which is C two for this location. Next slide. This project is located in an existing, uh, shopping center. Uh, there's a vacancy and so the applicant is requesting to fill that vacancy by opening up a new hair salon. Uh, this illustration just kind of shows the layout of the proposed project. As it relates to the specific request, um, staff is recommending approval, um, given the fact that this is located along the busy corridor, uh, on O National. Um, and, and, um, as a result of this and as a result of the vacancy, we thought that this would be an appropriate use. Uh, when this particular issue, um, this particular case was brought up to planning commission, uh, in August, uh, the planning commission recommended, recommended denial. Uh, and their reasonings for denial was that they said that the area was oversaturated with these types of uses, um. I was not able to present a overview of the existing types of similar uses in the area, but, um, one of the comments from a community member mentioned that there's just the influx of these types of uses and therefore, um, they were in agreement. They, being the planning commission, were in agreement with the resident and so they denied the particular project. So with that, this concludes staff's presentation and I believe the applicant is here, um, if there are any questions related to the application.
All right, I am going to open the public hearing. Do we have any for or against? Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have two, uh, comments in opposition. Um, I didn't know if the applicant, Ms. Tamika Hall, was on the call.
Ms. Hall, are you there?
I, I do not see anyone with that name in the, in the meeting.
All right, uh, what should we do?
I can go ahead and read the opposition into the record if you like.
Yes, please.
First comment in opposition is from Mr. Michael Venable, who lives on Montilly Circle in District Six. He states in opposition to U twenty-two dash zero zero eight, due to the over exacerbation of light uses consolidated in an area damages the perception and visibility of the old national corridor. The following list of hair salons have physical old national highway addresses. Salon Dow House, Eves African Hair Braiding, Ulu's African Hair Braiding, Studio Get Pampered, Lox of Love, Looks by Shan, Charlie's Angels Hair Salon, Salon J, Gordon, Glamour Girls Beauty Bar and Virgin Hair Store, Hair Creations, Genesis Hair Art, Colors Hair Design Sulia Salon, Infamous Styles and Aicha Hair Braiding. Though all of these establishments are probably great businesses, limiting light uses in a small general area is necessary to promote diversity for economic prosperity. For the benefit of the redevelopment of O National Corridor, it is in the best interest to deny this use request. The next comment is from Mr. Alvin Reynolds, who lives in the Lake Royale community. Uh, once again, this request does not seem as though we can move away from this type of business or the abundance. And I stand in opposition, opposition. And I stand in opposition, opposition to this use permit. That concludes the comments for this item.
Alright, uh, we will go to questions from council, uh, starting with the district representative.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hall, what is the closest proximity of the ne- uh, nu- hair salon? Like, what is the distance from this proposed hair salon to the very next hair salon?
Unfortunately, I, I don't know the closest proximity. What I can estimate based upon that area that, uh, the clerk just showed is that probably within the next shopping center or two, you can probably find a hair salon. And, and I'm, I'm glad you asked that question. I was gonna, uh, ask the mayor if he would just give me a moment to kind of talk about some general um, understanding of nuisance types of uses. And I, um, sent this information over to the city manager, assistant city manager, and economic development director. Typically, in the planning realm, um, we have general types of those nuisance uses, and you guys all too, are all too familiar with those types. Adult bookstores, liquor stores, um, motels, uh, pawn shops, check cashing stores. Um, when we get to things such as personal services, um, I caution any elected official who I'm working with to consider that a particular nuisance, even if there is a concentration of those types of uses in the area. So those would be typical nail salons, hair salons, barber shops, things that are, again, personal service, um, that, you know, depending upon what the overall makeup is of the business. People may just like a certain type of business.
Right, Ms. Mr. Hall, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. I think that this is probably, we're probably venturing off into like a deeper discussion, um, that, that we need to have at a retreat or some such place. I, I, I I will, I will just say, um, part of what drove our zoning rewrite, which we need to revisit because it obviously did not fulfill the need that I'm about to dis- discuss. And that was, we were finding instances where our planning commission, which is made up of our residents, was disagreeing with our planning department. And if our, if our, if our planning and zoning ordinance is of our comprehensive plan are to be the expression of the people that we represent, then we've got to find a way to get our, our department in a line as much as possible, whenever possible, wherever possible, with what our residents wish. And so we just need to figure that out. But I don't think we can do that. Um, I don't think that we could or should do that, uh, in this public hearing. Um, so I just want to caution folks about that. Um, and then with that, I see Councilwoman Willis.
Well, hold on, hold, well, sir, I was, I was still.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the, the point of, the, the fact that I was making is we do have something in place where light uses from a distance requirement. And I just don't think that this meets the distance requirement, assuming that there's another hair salon in the very next plaza on the end of that plaza, which is less than a thousand squ- which is less than a thousand linear feet. So I would just say that I would just look at that as when we look at these, making these decisions on the um, I would just use the cost in there tailing as a measuring stick. And maybe that's what the planning commission was looking at when they, uh, made the decision and recommendation for denial. Thank you, sir.
Alrighty, Councilwoman Willis.
So, Mr. Hall, I, 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 I don't really think we're, I mean, when you say nuisance, the, the reason we have this coming before council, because what we're trying to avoid is an oversaturation of light uses within a same, uh, mile, within a same, within a certain same mile radius. And I understand what you're saying, that people may like certain businesses, but you don't need ten of the same light businesses within the area to get the service. And, you know, when you look at my district, when you look at, uh, the quarter on, on, um, on, um, on Cascade, the quarter on Old National, like, we have an oversaturation of light businesses. And I'm not going to specifically say, um, you know, call out the businesses. So the purpose of having them come before us when you have an oversaturation of light businesses is for us to decide as council, you know, based on the feedback from our community, whether we want to continue another light use in our community. Our community desires to have, um, uh, a diverse, diversity and, and, um, more upscale light businesses. And so, um, for me, I think the process is working. I mean, look, there's a light use before us. It's up to the district council person whether or not, you know, he wants to move forward or whether or not he wants to listen to what the planning commission says. You know, it's up to the council person. But that is the purpose of us doing this, because we heard residents say they don't want, they want diversity, and they want more upscale business in our city. And yes, I am publicly saying this because that's what the community says, and I have no qualms with, uh, repeating what the, what the community has told me to say. Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Willis, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of thoughts, um, as we've been kind of working towards, working with the LCI and really looking at the businesses on Old, on the Old National Corridor. Um, the first thought is, just because a business exists does not mean that it is a quality business. Um, there are a lot of buildings along Old National where businesses have cycled in and out over the years. That does not mean that they are operating at a level that I think the community would want. And one of the things about kind of living in a capitalistic society is that competition tends to do one of two things. Either one, drive the businesses that are not able to reach the standard out of business, or two, it forces them to innovate and to compete. Um, and so I think that we can't just have a blanket, well, it's another, well, it's just another hair salon, without having details and, you know, plans or any information about what the salon, at, what the salon actually is going to be, what it's going to actually look like, what services it's going to provide. The second thing I would say is that, um, the hair care industry as a whole is starting to shift. And so whereas, you know, I'm very much accustomed to your traditional hair salon, right? And Hair Creations is my salon, Ms. Sharon is my hairstylist, you know, and she keeps my hair tight and right. But that model of going into a hair salon where you have six or eight hairstylists lined up with bowls and dryers in the back, and, you know, possibly a break room somewhere, is not what the future of hair care looks like. It is starting to move towards salon suites. Um, and so I think that, you know, as, you know, I get older, and you know, the, the model that I am accustomed to starts to give way to the model that I think is much more in tune with, with my daughter's generation. Um, we're probably going to see a transition period where we start to shift from, you know, what the type of salon I've been going to since I was probably six to the types of salons that are opening up now. Um, and so I would just like to, I guess, caution everyone that before we look at something and say it's exactly the same, that we make sure we know what we're looking at and what type of business is actually on the table, because we don't want to miss the opportunity to be part of the shift that is happening in hair care, um, because we lump all hair salons in together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. That was, that was thoughtful. We need to have a, that's a courageous conversation that we need to have about new, new industries in our communities. Um, seeing no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And, Mr. Clerk, please sound the last item.
Second to last. So the neck, the last, uh, the last, the next, uh, public hearing is Z twenty-two dash zero one zero. It's a public hearing for a questery zone from AG one to CUP for seventy-seven single-family homes locate, located at seventy-five hundred Hall Road. It's located in District Four, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, Derek Hall, reporting on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. Um, this item, I think, uh, the clerk is pulling it up, so I can pull up, uh, my item. This is a request to construct seventy-seven units. Just give me one moment, let me pull this up. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from AG one, uh, to CUP, Community Unit Plan, to construct seventy-seven single-family homes. Um, as it relates to the future land use, uh, the future land use is rural neighborhood. Uh, and what is inconsistent is the current zoning designation. So with the future land use designation of rural neighborhood, it's inconsistent to have AG one. Therefore, to make it consistent, the applicant is requesting a community unit plan zoning district, which would allow the construction of seventy-seven single-family homes. Um, and this would, in turn, if approved by council, make the project consistent with the comprehensive plan. The next slide, uh, related to the, um, illustrations that you see in front of you, um, the future land use, uh, again, is rural neighborhood. Uh, um, the current zoning is AG one. Uh, but with the request for rezoning, um, uh, Community Unit Plan, it would make it consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, uh, if you're there, then next slide shows kind of the illustration. So this area is currently a wooded area. Um, but just to the southeast corner of the project area, there is some additional, um, development at the site. And then the applicant has provided an overview to illustrate how they plan to include the, um, construction of the homes for the particular project. Um, worth noting, there is, within the entire project site, there is an existing cell tower. And so as a part of our deliberation and discussion with staff and the applicant, we discussed having to make sure that there is always access to the cell tower provider, to make sure that, uh, there is no particular restrictions from the future landowner to get, to gain access to this particular, um, area of the project site. Next slide, as a result of, of the interesting and, uh, configuration of the proposed project, staff has provided several conditions to make sure that in order to achieve uh, the highest and best use of the land related to residential development, um, we include the following conditions. Uh, there will be strict development standards related to the construction, um, the exterior of the types of homes that are being built. Uh, a turn lane and a deceleration lane will be required as a part of the overall development. Sidewalks throughout the subdivision will be required. A walking trail and seating areas, um, will be featured as additional amenities for the site. Each house will have two car garages. Um, again, they will conform to the design standards that are related to this particular area of City of South Fulton. There is a separate access easement that we will require to be recorded for the cell tower so that the user or users of the cell tower can always have access, and that access can be blocked by the future homeowner. And then there is going to be a requirement for a privacy fence adjacent to the cell tower, just to make sure that people cannot trespass and climb up to the cell tower itself. So based upon the addition of these conditions, staff is recommending approval. Um, planning commission heard this case back in August, and the recommendation was denial. Uh, and so with that, staff will conclude its presentation. And for this particular project, I do know that the applicant is present.
Alright, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open the public. Um, do, do we have speakers for or against?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I know the applicant, uh, attorney Battle is on the line and has a presentation. But we have also received nine comments in opposition to this, uh, case. Uh, three of those comments are live speakers who are present in the meeting.
Alright, uh, thank you. Um, let's hear from the applicant first, please.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-two, um, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at North Lake, Tucker, Georgia. Um, I'm going to ask if I can share my screen. Fabulous. Um, as indicated by staff, um, we are here talking about seventy-five, um, Hall Road. Um, sorry about that. Um, the property is indicated is currently zoned AG one, and we are seeking to rezone to CUP. Um, originally, we had proposed, uh, for seventy-seven lots. We have now amended our site plan um, and are only requesting, um, a total of seventy-five lots. Um, the price points on these units will be in the high three hundreds to low four hundreds. Um, and we are in, uh, Council District Four, um, with the Cedar Grove overlay. Um, there is a cell tower that is located on this property. Um, it is on a separate lot that is not included in the density calculation, um, for this proposed project. That was a question that came up during the planning commission. It is not included within that area. Um, there is a monopole, um, with a generator area, um, that's currently fenced in. It should be noted that the current, um, zoning ordinance does not provide for any distance requirements with regards to that monopole. Um, we have taken it upon ourselves, however, to address that issue on our site. Um, despite the fact that it's not, um, addressed on the, uh, current, um, site where the cell tower is located, which is roughly a total of ten thousand square feet. Um, this project, again, is going to show the CUP with seventy-five lots with minimum lot width of sixty-five feet. Um, with a seven thousand square foot lot at a density of no more than one point nine units per acre. When we first started this project, um, before we actually filed, um, you see before you the site plan that was originally proposed with seventy-seven units. Um, the cell tower area was located, um, in the center, um, where we also had some uh, recreational area and walking trail around the site. After meeting with the staff and with the community, we opted, um, to redesign the site so that um, we did not have homes kind of surrounding the cell tower, um, area, despite the fact that this is all buildable and developable land. Um, there was some question, again, at planning commission, whether or not this was developable land. And what we made emphatically clear is that all of this land, um, is actually developable. The challenge we have is that there is a cell tower that is located, um, on the site. Um, after, um, that discussion originally with the community, Um, after, um, that discussion originally with the community, we revised the site plan, um, to remove all the homes around the perimeter of the site so that we actually preserved more green space. And then we also made certain that, um, we had isolated the cell tower more with just a walking trail around the perimeter. Um, we also relocated the front entrance into the site. Um, went down to one point of entrance and relocated it from in front of one of the, um, homeowners across the street. Um, when you look here at the, um, plan, it does show that we've got a two-hundred-foot perimeter um, around from the center of where the, the pole is located, um, to account for the fall zone of the pole itself. Note that none of that is within an existing or the proposed lots. Again, we've added a two-hundred-foot radius around, um, the edge, um, of the site um, to just show, um, the, the, the location of the pole. And then additionally, we've made some modifications to the site plan to add, um, along the front entrance, um, along the front street, the tot lot as well as a, um, parking area and the, um, mail kiosk. And we actually made a further, um, revision to remove, um, this lot fifty-nine and now have created some additional space, um, where we are proposing, uh, to have some type of open space, um, for, uh, older kids, uh, what we're anticipating and, and other adults within the community. Um, and what we were considering was either some type of a, uh, court space or a- alternatively, um, exercise stations that could be located, um, on that site that could be usable by all of, um, the adults and young, uh, teenagers within the community. Um, again, uh, we'll continue here. Um, this is the site as proposed. It should be noted that there are other zonings that were approved, um, in the area um, that allow for density at a higher density than what we are proposing on this particular site, uh, including one that is located, um, here where it's zoned R five A where the density is over two-point-seven units per acre. And then there's a CUP directly across the street that has frontage on Hall. Um, that's at two-point-four-two units per acre. Um, we are at one-point-nine units per acre. Um, these are some of the, um, facade designs that have been proposed. Uh, I believe that we are accepting of the staff's recommendations, um, with regards to the facade designs. Um, we believe that this is an excellent location for this project as it is adjacent to, um, the schools that lie uh, along Hall Road. Um, and, um, we also, uh, obtained a letter from the existing uh, landowner. Her name is Susan McClure, um, Waddell. Uh, she's resided at seventy-five hundred Hall Road for almost thirty years. Uh, the property is owned in a trust for her benefit. Uh, the trustees for the trust are Frank West, family friend, and Diana McClure, who is her nephew's wife. As the trustees are entitled to a fee but have not and are not willing to be charged, um, to manage the trust. She is looking, uh, to sell the property as stated here because she is currently under twenty-four-hour, um, care in an in-home nursing home. And the reason she is selling the property is so that they can, uh, that she can move and be in place where she can receive a greater level of care. Um, there was some question about whether or not this was being done solely for the trustees, uh, to make money. Um, but that is not the case, um, that was raised by some of the, the residents in the area. We know that this is a area that has seen a lot of new development. And what it is, our hope, um, is that we can contribute to the positive growth that is happening around in this area. We think being located adjacent to the school with new families is an excellent place uh, for this to be located so that the kids can actually walk to school, um, as opposed to having to ride the bus to school and contribute more, um, to the congestion, um, within the area. Um, we've tried to listen to the responses that we have received from the community and believe that, um, we have done our best, uh, to try and, um, address the issues that um, have been raised. We cannot satisfy everybody, um, but we do again believe that because this property currently is not zoned in a manner that is consistent, um, with the current land use plan, um, that the rezoning is, um, both, uh, appropriate. Um, but in many ways, um, required in order to bring, um, alignment between the land use plan and the zoning for the area. And we're here to respond to any questions you may have. We also have our engineer, Steve Moore, um, on the line with us, along with Ray Kuntliff, who is representing, uh, the applicant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. You have a minute and fifty-six seconds left on the clock. Um, we're going to hear from the, uh, those in opposition now. And there, or was there anyone else? Let me make sure. Was there anyone else in support that you wanted to share that last minute fifty-six seconds with?
No, sir. And we also have Tyler McSwain, um, on the line with us with Battle Law. Thank you.
Um, so we're going to go to those in opposition. I will remind you, you have ten minutes in total. I will ask if people speak no more than two minutes. Everyone that we have in line will get to say. Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Clerk, sound the, sound those.
Yes, we have four speakers that wish to provide live comment. Um, the first is Patrick Ewing. Next will be Milton Swift. Then Kelvin Turner and then Naima Gilyard. Uh, please, uh, provide your comment in that order. Uh, as stated, please state your name, address, and please, uh, limit your comments to, uh, two minutes or less. Thank you.
Hey, good evening and thank you, Clerk, councilman mayor. My name is Patrick Ewing and I live in District Four on Hall Road. Um, my comment on the proposed rezoning focuses on what I believe is an error in planning zoning's interpretation of the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive use plans. Those plans designated our neighborhood on Hall Road, including the subject property as a rural neighborhood, according to our city plan documents. An excerpt I provided to the clerk as a handout to everyone here. A rural neighborhood character area intends to preserve the primarily rural characteristics of the city of South Fulton. The staff recommendation presented to council this evening allows for home sites as small as seven thousand square feet between an eighth of an acre and a quarter acre. My first request for council to take into consideration tonight is how this rezoning request can meet the requirement to maintain the existing scale and design of the community. When all eighteen occupied home sites on Hall Roads range from, in size from two to seventy-two acres and most average around seventeen acres. Comparing the scale of a quarter acre lot to seventeen is like comparing the scale of a Mack truck you pass by driving on the road to my two-year-old son's hot wheel. My second point, the developers using lands in the site considered unfit for development such as floodplain wetlands and steep slopes to drill a gross density requirement. And our plan documents down from a requirement of less than two housing units per acre to a net density of five units per acre, almost three X higher than plan, which is coincidentally the maximum single-family density allowed by the very broad CUP zoning designation. The CUP de- designation is intentionally broad because it's available in nearly all residential plan uses from suburban neighborhoods close to urbanized areas all the way to our least dense plan use of agricultural neighborhood. I believe city staff may have erred based on my understanding the allowances within CUP should be applied in conjunction or full context to all other requirements outlined in the plan for a particular type of plan use. My question for city council is why, in this case, the city staff recommending developers use CUP as a backdoor to allow max- maximum densification, but is clearly out of line with the definitions for a rural neighborhood outlined in our twenty-twenty-one documents. It seemed to me in my neighbors, this proposal is clearly inconsistent with the characteristics of a long-established Hall Road, but farm and estate home community. Um, I'll, in summary, I'll wrap up. I feel staff erred in recommending a development of such high dense intensity when the rural neighborhood plan land use specifies appropriate development will maintain the rural character and scale inside preserve the primarily rural characteristics of City of South Fulton. While CUP is an allowed district according to the plan, this is a grimace application, the most intensive application of that type of district in context to all other guidelines for the rural neighborhood plan land use. Please deny this request later this month and any similar future requests that clearly sidestep the land use plans. I and other citizens work so hard to provide input on during the twenty-twenty public engagement exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Mr. Milton Swift.
You're, you're on mute, Mr. Swift. Here, we're going to try and unmute you here.
Okay, how are you doing? My name is Milton Swift. I live at seventy-seven sixty-five Hall Road. I've been here for over twenty years on Hall Road. I was able to see a lot of things that go on the Hall Road. Okay? In two thousand nine, there was a lot of rain that came in this area. We had a whole lot of rain. I was going to work one day. When I got through, I came home and it was just raining pouring down. We have a farm area down the road where bridges. And that evening, the water had reached the top of the farm area by the bridge. By the next morning, I was going to work, the bridge had washed away because so much rain in that area. You can consider it somewhat of a flood area down in there. When those homes in that area, anywhere in that area, the floodplain area will only lead to houses getting flooded. Once they get flooded, what happens? Houses get abandoned, people move, houses left there, no one in them. I'm in denial of this because I don't need abandoned houses out here on Hall Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swift. Uh, next is Mr. Kelvin Turner.
Good afternoon, councilman, mayor. I'm Kelvin Turner. My wife and I reside at seventy-four ninety-five Hall Road, directly across the street from this proposed development. And we are in opposition to this development. The cell tower, and I want to speak on that, is not on the FCC list. The warning sign on the gate states, beyond this point, ready-your-frequency fields at this site may exceed. FCC rules for human exposure. For your safety, obey all posted signs and site guidelines for working in ready-your-frequency environments. A typical cell tower can provide service up to four and a half miles away many organizations around the world, including the International Association of Firefighters, LA Unified School District, the European Environmental Agency, and the European Parliament are placing parameters around tower safety, especially in relation to its proximity to children. There is published research primarily funded by governments and industry that shows that cell phone electromagnetic radiation causes the following effects. Alter's brain activity, disturb sleep, alters human reaction times, weakening, weakens the blood and brain barrier, increased auditory brain stem response, significant changes in the cardiovascular system, causes memory loss, concentration difficulties, fatigue, and headaches, and cancer. Right? And that's just some of it. There cannot be a commitment that there would not be future issues of five G. Environmental Health Organization published the following. The New Hampshire Commission to Study the Environmental and Health Effects of Evolving Five G Technology released a final report with fifteen recommendations to reduce public exposure, increase transparency, and strengthen federal regu- regulation. The Five G report recommends US federal agencies coordinate to protect people, wildlife, and the environment from harmful levels of radiation and states until there is a federal action, New Hampshire should take the initiative to protect this environment. The commission recommendation, including public education campaign on reducing exposure, replacing wifi with wired, not wireless networks in schools and independently funded health studies. Cell towers and upcoming five G technology is too much of a radiation unknown. The developer knows that the cell tower is a community issue. Such approval for a project in proximity to a cell tower would be an unnecessary hardship for current and future residents and contrary to public interest. Remember, the range of cell tower is within four and a half miles where it is located. This would include the proposed subdivision. Uh, my wife and I were in opposition to this, uh, although they moved the entrance from directly in front of our driveway and moved it down the hill. They moved it directly in front of our neighbor's, uh, home entrance, Miss Cathy, who is also the sister to the, uh, owner of the property. Uh, the owner's family, including her brother, are in opposition to her home being sold uh, and the property being sold and a subdivision of seventy-five houses being built, which are not in, they just don't fit in with the Hall Road, um, land that we have and the homes that we live in on Hall Road. The smallest property is mine and my wife's, and we have three acres, which is the smallest lot on Hall Road, and we have one house on these three acres, not seven thousand square feet. Thank you. So I would, uh, ask that the council deny this application when it comes before council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Turner. Uh, next speaker, Mr. Adams.
I don't show, uh, council, former councilwoman, uh, Gilyard in the meeting, uh, but I also have six other, uh, written comments that I can use the remaining minute and fifty-one minutes left. Okay, the, uh, next comment is from Ms. Ping Yi, who lives on Hall Road. Um, the comment states, Dear council members, as a neighbor living on Hall Road, I am strongly against the rezoning at seventy-five hundred Hall Road and the subsequent addition of seventy-seven households to Hall Road. Hall Road could barely keep up with the roughly eighteen households and the three schools on it. Hall Road is definitely not designed, designed or built to support the addition of seventy-seven homes. About two-thirds of Hall Road is unpaved. The unpaved section suffers from serious water erosion and kicks up plenty of dust during dry weather whenever a vehicle drives by. There is serious congestion at the Hall Road Highway ninety-two intersection during mon- morning rush hour when students from the three schools get in and, and late afternoon when they get out. With the addition of another seventy-seven households, I cannot imagine how long it'll take to get on Highway ninety-two every morning during rush hour. Please consider the negative impacts addition of seventy-seven homes will cause to Hall Road and to the quality of life citizens currently living on Hall Road. I personally urge you to vote against the rezoning at seventy-five hundred Hall Road. Next is, uh, Mrs., uh, Gundy Turner, who lives on Hall Road. Please don't destroy our community with the cluster of houses that are not compatible with the present estates. Next is Jennifer Gender, who lives on Hall Road. Uh, it just says, please deny seventy-five hundred Hall Road. Next is Sheila Matts, who lives on Hall Road. Uh, greetings, mayor and council. Hall Road is the most diverse street in the city of South Fulton, but we are unified by our love for our pride and our, and commitment to our street and our city. Collectively, we have invested. Think that completes the time. Did you?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I'll finish this last one. Collective, we have invested one hundred, hundreds of thousands of dollars in renovations, landscaping, and maintaining our farms and ranches. We are not only taxpayers but give our time, resources, and expertise by serving on boards and volunteering when needed. In a nutshell, we had a vested interest in the city of South Fulton. That is why it would be unconscionable for you to let outsiders come in who have made no contribution to our city and whose only goals to pimp our street and lead. This egregious act would, would disrupt our lifestyle, peace of mind, and jeopardize our investments. As City of South Fulton residents, our plea to you is to do not let this happen. Yes, sir. That, that completes the comments.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I, I'm going to go ahead. Uh, I'm sorry. We do have a minute and fifty-six for rebuttal for Ms. Battle. Did you want to use any of that time?
Yes, um, I wanted to make a couple of points. Um, number one, with respect to Hall Road, um, the Transportation Department has, um, provided the improvements that we are to make, um, along uh, our frontage, including a curb and gutter and a five-foot sidewalk. Uh, we have well in excess of a thousand feet, uh, lineal feet of, uh, right-of-way of frontage along Hall Road. So all those improvements will be made, um, that will benefit the overall community. We'll be constructing a left turn lane, um, on Hall Road into the site as well as a deep cell lane and dedicating additional right-of-way, um, in order to provide for, um, those additional, um, features along the street. Um, also, um, our site has more than ninety-five percent, um, developable land. Um, there is not this, uh, large swath of area that, um, is being suggested that it's not developable on the site. Um, and, um, with regards to the cell tower, we know that those are located in neighborhoods. Um, we have, uh, in fact, my church recently, uh, uh, Um, we have, uh, in fact, my church recently, uh, approved a, uh, cell tower being located right next to our sanctuary, um, and near homes as well. Um, and that was deemed permissible. We also have, um, as we have provided, um, an appropriate fall zone, which we actually don't technically have to provide. Typically, it is the cell tower company that is providing that, um, distance for the fall zone, uh, from surrounding properties. But we are taking upon ourselves to provide that additional area. And also, the reason why our lots are smaller, um, is because we are leaving over fifty-nine percent of this site green space, as opposed to coming in and tearing down trees throughout the community. Um, but instead leaving, um, like I said, fifty-nine, uh, percent of this site is open space, green space. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing now. Um, I do want to see if there are any questions or comments from members of council. And I'm checking green and checking...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor here. Um, I wanted to, uh, is Mr. Hall still around?
I'm still here.
Yeah. Hi, hi, Mr. Hall. Um, have we, have we examined? Because Hall Road is a little bit unique, uh, with those schools, um, with, with its, um, most of it being unpaved with the infrastructure for drainage and all that sort of stuff virtually non-existent. Um, and then there are some developments both in the City of South Fulton and also in, um, in Union City that are already planned for the area. Um, did your team take a comprehensive look at what is already approved in, in the area? That's what, what's coming?
Uh, we do that, council member, to answer your question. We do that as a part of our overall analysis. And so we know that there are some additional proposed developments in the area. Um, and then contrary to what was said earlier related to the comprehensive plan, you know, that, that document in and of itself is the document that guides the orderly growth and development of any community. And so while we recognize that today the area may not be urbanized, as the term we planners typically use, the future for the area looks to urbanize this area. So with the proposed developments that are underway, the opportunity to buy up more land, um, and expect additional land use entitlements that will come forward, and this project in particular, um, we see that the natural order of urbanization shows that there's going to be greater densities that will be introduced into this area.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I got.
Okay. Um, I don't see anyone else in any of the queues. I, I, I've, I've got... I've got two comments. Um, the first is, I... I just, I, 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 I just want to put this out. I just want to say this, that, that I... One of the reasons that I think is important that we have these meetings in person as well, um, is so that everybody can really access them. Um, Councilwoman Gilier was trying to get in the meeting. Um, she was having issues. And, and if she is representative of a population in our community, um, for which this may just not work, then, then we gotta, as soon as possible, get back to meeting in person, um, because this just doesn't work for everybody. Um, the next, the, the next thing is, I, I do want to agree with, uh, I, I think it was, uh, the Turners. Uh, Hall Road is one of the most diverse roads, like, in our city. You know, running for this office and then being in this office. I, I've gotten to meet so many farmers and so many people in rural communities on Hall Road and, 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 um, Cedar Grove and Fife. And we have been having conversations. And so I want to caution you, Mr. Hall. Um, I, 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 I will, I will, in the end, after some vigorous debate, yield to your expertise. But I, I am not sure that the urbanized future of this area has been decided. And, and, and I think that we, we need to have some conversations about how keeping things rural in a rapidly urbanizing place can yield, like, a very profitable, uh, stream of income for, for our city. Right? Because it, like, it will become more of a jewel over time if we protect it. And, uh, I'm going to ask, um, I, I really am trying to find places, uh, where, where we all agree. Um, and I'm, I'm speaking to my council now. Like, I, I really am trying to improve my communication and our communication and finding places where we agree. So I'm saying publicly here that, uh, for, for the next few council meetings, for the next few work sessions, at least one of my two mayor items will be about our comprehensive plan. And just, there, there'll be tough conversations, but I just think that, that if we can, if we can talk through it and work through it, um, and get in some changes, uh, we can, we, we can have, we can have developments coming to us. Residents are just excited about, and we always have a hundred positive comments. Um, a- and so I'm saying that. I'm putting that on record here because I'm going to reach out. And some people say I don't reach out, but I'm, I'm reaching out. My phone number is four oh four five four five thirty-nine hundred, same number. Uh, if, if people are interested in that, if they have ideas about that, let's talk about that. Um, because I do think... I do think it's something that we need to talk about. And I, and I, I did, did this talk about radiation, I would, uh, and, and, and cellphone towers. Um, I don't have time to get into that now. But I, I do think it's worth our city doing some research or connecting with some researchers. We got all these great research institutes, Georgia Tech, whatnot. Um, and, and really studying that issue, you know, um, you know, it's just something we could study. And we might not even have to pay a lot for it. There may be some interns or some people who would love to study housing developments in majority African-American communities with a sixty-six percent homeownership rate. So, uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to, to put those things into the atmosphere.
I'm gonna call you tomorrow, Mayor.
And with that...
Listen, Mr. Mayor, I went back into queue.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilman Sebastian.
So, thank you, Mayor. So I wasn't here when that plan was, was adopted. And since the, it, it maybe took me less than three months to realize that there, there are major, major issues with those plans. Right? Um, not everything that fits in every district fits the same in our city. Right? And I really, I, I've already been having these discussions with staff about how we go about to take another look at these comprehensive development plan, future land use, and zoning. Right? So I would, I, I would just caution you to let us work on this together and do, do not rush that conversation, that conversation. Because doing it out of, out of timing could cost more harm than good. Before this particular project, um, came up, um, I was having those kind of discussions already with staff. So while I know that we have certain things on paper right now, I do not think that it is where it needs to be just like here. Okay? So I, I agree with you that we need to take another look at it. And there are some of you who have been here and who went through the process. I don't know what that process was like. But certainly, um, for me as a representative of District Four, I really want us to take another, another closer look at this. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you. Thank you. We, we will, we'll definitely do that. We'll, we'll, we'll get into a new process with our new, um, we have a whole new person to, to do it with now. Uh, Councilwoman Willis.
Yeah, I just want to save your call. Um, I'll be working with Mr. Hall in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Uh, any other comments? Any other?
Yes, I do. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and, uh, thanks to Sheriff Hall and his, uh, community, uh, teams that he will be organizing. And, uh, we all can collectively work together. Uh, as I always say, it's, uh, it's collaborations that win championships. And we're trying to win and give the constituency the best quality of life and return on their investment that they made here in the city of South Fulton. And we, uh, thank you, thank him, thank everybody for that. As let's all just work together and get this done.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I think I saw, uh, our State Representative Mandisha Hall in the room.
Oh, please bring greetings to State Representative Mandisha A. Hall, please.
Absolutely. I want to give that privilege to our elected representative for this area.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to remind you, point of order, this is a zoning hearing. Can we, uh, are you, I mean, we're, we're making comments that's not germane to the zoning hearing.
I'm going to allow our State Representative for the area, Mandisha Thomas, uh, to make any comments that she would like to make about this Hall Road issue. Representative Thomas, did you have a comment? I don't know. Uh, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Uh, I don't know what's happening. These, these don't, these Zooms don't work for, for me sometimes too. Um, okay. Well, I think that we'll just end on that with Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. And Mr. Clerk, did we have one more item?
Yes, sir. Uh, the last item is item eight.
Point of order. Do we need to close out that zoning hearing because, from that case?
I, I, I closed the hearing before we, we got comments from council. Is that correct, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, that's what I wrote down. Yes.
All right. Go ahead and sound that last item, Mr. Adams.
Last item's number eight, public hearing for an ordinance text amendment to address solid waste transfer stations in the city of South Fulton. This is sponsored by Councilmember Row.
Dr. Row.
Thank you for recognizing me. Um, one of the things that, um, I noticed as, uh, I looked at our municipal, we have very little regulations dealing with transfer stations, although we have a number of them in our city. Um, and so this particular text amendment seeks to, um, re, well, to regulate them. So, um, it deals with everything for dealing with pest control, um, odors, distance from residential areas, and the like. And so I, um, hope you will support the text amendments. If you have any questions, I am available to answer.
All right. Uh, Councilwoman Willis. We can't hear you. Are you...
I'll, I'll follow up with her if she can't hear. I mean, if we can't hear.
I don't know what's, I don't know what's happening with, with, with our connection. Maybe we just need to check our connection. That's, that's happening a lot now. Um, but she did put her hand down. Um, all right, so... Well, thank you so much for the, do we need, do we need to take action on this at the next council meeting?
Yes.
We'll broaden all of these at the next council meeting.
Right. And, and, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing for this one as well. Although we didn't receive any comments, we, you do need to open and close it.
Open the public hearing. Tell me for, uh, people for and against.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we did not receive any comments in support or opposition to this item.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and, uh, Councilman Row, I will definitely be following up with you about that.
Okay.
All right. Um, we have reached, I guess, the end. Go ahead, sound the, the next item.
Yes, sir. We're at item four listed on the agenda, council comments.
All right. Uh, do we have council comments, uh, District One, Dr. Row?
Yes, I wanted to, um, acknowledge, uh, Bethel United Methodist Church for a lovely nine-one-one service to commemorate and show appreciation to our first responders on this past Sunday. Um, um, appreciate the invitation that was extended to myself, the fire department, and the police department. Um, in addition, um, the City of South Fulton Police did an outstanding job as well on this past Friday with their, uh, program that was hosted at the Southwest Arts Center. Uh, in addition, Fansimo had a, uh, outstanding, uh, program that they hope to build over time. Um, Mayor Khalid, uh, was able to accompany, uh, me to that event. Um, we want to see that grow in our city. And we are looking forward to their upcoming five K as they want to be more involved in our city and in our community. That concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you. Uh, District Two, our crown jewel, Count, uh, Councilwoman Gump.
Well, uh, thank you for recognizing me. First, I would like to say Happy Grandparents Day and Month uh, to all the grandparents here in the city of South Fulton. I do know that, uh, tomorrow we will be having our Pot with the Cop at six P.M. at the Button Road Precinct. Uh, we will be giving out ice cream, free ice cream. So bring the kids so we can meet our officers and celebrate the success um, in fighting crimes that we have had in the city of South Fulton and within the district. Uh, we have also launched our litter campaign, Keeping South Fulton Beautiful. Uh, we have billboards that are actually up on Camp Creek Parkway. If you see any of the billboards, um, please know that we are really focusing on educating the public not to trash our city. Uh, we are also in the process of going through with amending the current litter ordinance as well. So, um, check out the City of South Fulton's billboards that are on Camp Creek Parkway. Um, also too, we have gun buyback. That's on October the fifteenth. Uh, that is the same day as the bulk trash. So hopefully people will go and get rid of their trash and also, uh, bring some of their, uh, guns or guns that they no longer want uh, to the Button Road Precinct on October the fifteenth. Also too, we'll be having our Senior Safety Summit that will be on October the twenty-seventh, and that is in conjunction with the police department. We had a very, very successful economic development meeting in regards to the Westwood Project uh, on the Chattahoochee. Uh, it's a lot of interest and a lot of positive comments. I do continue to ask that, um, residents be engaged and continue to send their thoughts and comments. And lastly, I do want to mention that Stonewall Town Elementary has been selected for Community Schoolyard, um, project with the Trust of Public Land. They will be, um, building a playground, uh, at the school. And, uh, I had the opportunity to sit with some fourth and fifth graders where they are in the process of designing that. So, um, super excited and more details to come very soon. Other than that, we got a lot of stuff that's happening in District Two, the Crown Jewel. And I just continue to look forward to more great things happening.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, did you want to just give that street address for, uh, the Button Road Precinct?
I think it's thirty-two fifty Button Road, in the Button Road Village, uh, Precinct.
Thank you, thank you. All right. District Three, The Place To Be, Councilwoman Willis.
Well, um, my, uh, comments are going to be real short. We're just, want to remind everyone that the Yee, the annual Yee Fest would be at Welcome Mall Park. Um, it is, uh, hosted by, uh, Melody. Um, she is a world-renowned, uh, dancer. She dances- Uh, Melody, um, she is a world-renowned, uh, dancer. She dances behind. A lot of entertainers, but, uh, she has, uh, brought the yeek fest and yeek is a, um. Is a dance that was started in the nineties in Metro Atlanta. And, um, there, there will be several dance groups coming out, um, to Welcome Mall Park between one and eight. And it's pretty much a dance festival that started four years ago and she brings it to the city of South Fulton every year. So please come out. And join in the festivities and partake in the yeek dance festival and, um. Um, and, um, there will be several dance groups from Metro Atlanta that will be visiting. Throughout the day and several DJs throughout the day, um, for this event. Thank you. That is this Saturday from one to eight.
All righty, uh, District Four, Councilman Sebastian.
Goodness, Mayor, um, just wanna give a couple of shout-outs and thank yous. Uh, I don't see our fire chief here, but I just wanted to thank him and his team for. Uh, the push-in ceremony that we have for the new engine eight. Uh, that now carries a thousand gallons of water. That can help to support fires that we may have in some of the rural areas of District Four where there's not a lot of, um, or dino hydrants. I must say, so I just wanted to, to thank them for that. Wanted to thank again, um, the folks for coming out to our town hall, our last town hall, the citizens who came out and. Thank staff here, Public Works, um, was here, um, fire chief was here. Uh, we had, um, we had G Dot and we also had Economic Development, Artie Jones and. Mister Derek Hall. Um, and further, just wanted to thank Mister Hall. I know there's a lot of activity going on in District Four. And, um, I've been having to work closer with him and staff and trying to keep on top of some of these things and. You know, every day we're winning some small victories and moving stuff forward in, in District Four, so I'm, um, really happy with that. We should be having a couple of groundbreaking, um, coming up. I can see a few more getting done before. The, uh, the end of the year and I'll just keep everyone, uh, informed with those. Just wanted to say, um, G Dot made an awesome presentation at, at the town hall. Uh, we have been addressing this issue, even though it's not the city of South Fulton, but it affects our citizen on, on, um. South Fulton Parkway and they have, um, released their plans for that they're gonna be implementing this summer. To try and close that medium at Majestic Place where a number of accidents have happened. And so they're gonna be diverting those trucks down to Hunter Mason and off the main Sultan, South Fulton Parkway into the park. So hopefully that, um, that will save lives. It's a first phase coming up this fall. And they're gonna be continuing to improve that four-way junction at, uh, Hunter Mason, so. Maybe in about a year or so, it will, it will look also very different. Want to invite folks to come out on September twenty-fourth, um, we're gonna be having our. Um, District Four Fall Festival at Wilkes-Milton Park. We have some nice stuff in storage. Um, if you guys have never heard, beautiful music playing on a steel drum. Come out, we're gonna have one of those there and we're gonna have some other activities, you know, pony rides for the kids, ice cream, all that good stuff for the kids. Um, of, of District Four. So again, just wanna thank everyone, staff for kind of accommodating me even in my first year, you know. We've stepped up the activities and Parks and Rec has had to keep up with me a little bit. So I just even wanna give a shout-out to the guys there in Parks and Rec who give us the logistical support for all of these activities. And that's all I got right now.
All right, thank you. And we are live in five with our incomparable Mayor Pro Tim Cory Reeves.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate that and, uh, absolutely. And so, uh, I do wanna just give a shout-out to all the staff. I know that you're doing the best that you are doing with what you have to work with and so we appreciate you. Uh, so very much for that. And this Saturday, this week. We have the Failwood Community Action Cleanup. Come on and, uh, grab a bag, grab a picker, grab a vest. And let's go clean up. When you finish there, come on over and jump over to the Old National Commons for the Old National Merchants Association. Annual five K that is in District Five. It is a certified race. Uh, you can qualify for the Peachtree Road Race in this event, which is awesome. After that. Wrap up, go shout change, rearrange and go and jump over to Carver Bible College where we'll be celebrating Sossi's ten, tenth anniversary. Of their organization and Saving Our Sons and Daughters Incorporated. They do a very awesome job with the youth here. And then when you finish that, go get in your tux and come on out to the Blue Event and we will be having annual gala. You can see, uh, the meter chappin', get your tickets and come on out there and celebrate. So it's gonna be a fun-filled weekend and of course. Save your energy and be at church on Sunday morning. And so, um, with that being said, hey, look here. I love this city. I love you all and you can't do absolutely nothing about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Reeves and Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Uh, and last but certainly not least, uh, District Six, my home. Uh, my place of origin, Councilwoman Natasha Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Want to thank all of the residents who came out for the town hall that, um, this past Saturday. And thank you to Artie Jones for coming and talking to residents about economic development issues. And really diving into what it takes to, to have economic development in, in a neighborhood. Um, and as well, thank you to Councilwoman Willis and Councilman Reeves. For coming to the town hall, um, and coming out to support that. I do appreciate their presence. Um, they knew that I had had quite a long week and was fresh off a plane from Rhode Island. And having their support there, um, was, was very welcome. Um. I believe that Sunday, the eighteenth, if I am looking at the right flyer, is going to be the rescheduled. Old Nat Day, you know, providing that it doesn't rain yet again. Um, and so of course, you know, we like to invite all residents out to come to the Old National Corridor. And, you know, come have some food, come have some fun. Um, and, you know, just kick back and relax on Sunday, the eighteenth with us. And with that, I yield.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm gonna. I'm gonna share. I'm gonna share my screen. Here we go. Uh, a lot of these have already been talked about, but, uh, uh, there are, there are a couple of new ones. I did so many, um, events this past weekend, uh, at, at Fastenal with, with Dr. Rao. Um, up for the, the push-in and the family day in District One for, uh. Uh, our fire department, but, but two of my favorite events this weekend was collecting this water for the people of Jackson, Mississippi. This is actually our second truck. Um, the first one was sponsored by, uh, Rappalot. Fresh Express, which is a, you know, they're actually in College Park, but they're South Fulton adjacent. Uh, the second truck. We collected over ten thousand bottles of water to send, um, to, uh, people in Mississippi. So I just wanna, uh, give a special thanks to all our, our corporate donors, um, Walmart, Kaiser Permanente. And Habitat for Humanity, all of our individual donors and, you know, everyone who made this trip possible. Including the incredible Man of South Fulton Fire who like helped load, uh, this truck. Um, my other favorite event was attending the Miracle League, uh, their, their opening day. That was our little, you know, we, uh, we did that, it was awesome. And here is their schedule for. Uh, here's their schedule for the rest of the year. So after, they've been on a two-year hiatus, obviously because of, uh, the pandemic. And also we are working to, uh, get them a field, uh, for which they deserve, but they allow. Uh, children who are differently able to play. Here's their schedule. They are in need of volunteers. So if you are interested, you can call Karen Nuttley, uh, at this number four seven oh two two three sixteen sixty-two. Or miracleleaks, S O C O S F at gmail dot com. Um. I am hosting a conversation about open meetings and open records. Uh, there's been, uh, a lot of questions about that. Uh, we were going to have it at a work session. It's now, I'm gonna host a town hall with this group, the Georgia First Amendment Foundation. They do these nationwide trainings that explain, um, the constitutional rights that every citizen has to their government. And how to access them. Uh. Right after that, uh, that's Thursday, uh, you can find that, you know, you can register for that at KhalidCares dot com and this event as well. Um, I have partnered with New Georgia Project. Uh, they are hosting a series of spades tournaments. All around Metro Atlanta. And I was like, oh, of course you have to come here to the blackest city in America because we got some space players for you. So they are hosting a two thousand dollar grand prize, uh, space tournament. It's going to be Thursday night. At Blue Marlin Bistro and, uh, it's completely free to enter. Obviously, we're not just. Um, uh, we're not just playing spades. Uh, New Georgia Project is, uh, trying to reach, uh, voters that are hard to reach, particularly our young African-American men. So we're gonna be talking about, you know, the issues that are on the ballot and making sure that everybody's registered to vote. It's free to register to vote. It's free to play spades. Please don't come and sit at one of these tables if you don't know what you're doing though. Cause it's, you know, it's serious business happening. Uh, we've talked about the Old National Five K. You can register at ONMA dot U S. Uh, the Yeek Fest, we talked about that. Um, but also happening this Saturday. At four thirty at Westlake High School is a Fulton County Marching Band Exposition. So these are all of the marching bands from all of the high schools in Fulton County, north and south. This is a, a really big thing, particularly this year because Westlake is hosting it. It has been held on the north side for the last twenty years. Um, they've been really lobbying and so this is a. Chance for all of our bands to show off, uh, in front of all of our constituents. So everybody come out to that if you can. And then of course, on that day, the biggest party of the year, uh, that we have in our city will be this Sunday. Uh, Mayor Mondays, you can call Khalid, you know, you can log on or call, uh, my public advocate, Yusef. And, uh, you can come in for Mayor Monday's appointment. And next, uh, week, I do wanna just spotlight this because we are not gonna have one of these before. That this, uh, new agricultural arts festival, uh, there's gonna be dozens of kidpreneurs out there. It is, if you are a young person, um, and you got a business and you are entrepreneur and you're doing big things in, in the city. You need to be here, um, uh, so it's gonna be the Southwest Arts Center, uh. Not this Thursday, but the following Thursday, the twenty-fourth, September twenty-fourth, four to seven P M. And you can, of course, uh, text folks into three three seven 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 for my newsletter and to get all of that information. Um, thank you all so much. South Fulton forever. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session or adjourn.
I'm gonna adjourn.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, here. Mayor, uh, we, what was that motion that was just made?
You adjourn.
Okay. I just need, we need to go into executive session, so I'll make a motion after we, no, after, if we adjourn, are we gonna go into executive session?
No, we're, we're just going to adjourn.
Okay, no, we need to go into executive session for personnel and real estate.
A substitute motion.
I need to make a substitute motion. And Councilman Rao was aware of this too. We need to go into executive session. Uh, to discuss, uh, real estate personnel. And, um, I'll go ahead and put, um, litigation because it is concerning personnel and litigation, but I'll go ahead and put on real estate. Just to have us covered.
Okay.
I didn't, I wouldn't know where we had something, okay? Yeah, we have something.
So there's a substitute motion that's been seconded.
Who's the seconder?
Second.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and call them.
Scroll call vote to go into executive session. Uh, Councilmember Rao.
Yes.
Councilmember Gom.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
We are recessed at eight twenty-nine P M.